I'd like to call the regular July Board of Trustees meeting to order and ask everyone to please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its liberty, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Welcome to the meeting and I will ask Peggy to call the roll.
Trustee Ash.
Here.
Trustee Bradenfall.
Here.
Trustee Daniels.
Here.
Trustee Flunder.
Here.
Trustee Maddox.
Here.
Trustee Rios.
Here.
And Trustee Townsend.
All right, thank you. It's good to see everyone or most everyone wearing your college ID tags, trustees, I appreciate that. Staff, everybody, thank you very much. We're getting there, all right?
We're being arrested.
We're getting there.
Did you threaten us with arresting?
I did, something about a warrant or something.
They're wearing those things.
Okay.
If you lost yours, you have to report it to campus police.
I'll report to campus police.
All right.
Term myself in.
Yeah, self-reporting.
I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda or amended agenda.
No move, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries, thank you. All right, agenda item four is this portion of the, it's that time of year where we enter into reorganization of the Board of Trustees for the 2014-2015 academic year. And so, I think traditionally I hand this over to Dr. Givens to sort of preside over that portion of the meeting. And so, I believe we're ready to go.
So you've adjourned, sent a DA, and now you turn it over to Dr. Givens to conduct the affairs to the president as elected, in accordance with Kansas statute, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you very much.
The meeting is now open for nominations of chairperson.
Nominate Wendell Maddox.
Second.
Okay.
Are there any other nominations?
We're nominating cease.
Second.
Okay. We have one name and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Tis done. We have a new president.
Please place Wendell.
Thank you.
Mr. Van Nuys.
Yes.
I hand this to you.
All accepted, Madam President, thank you very much.
Would you like the veil too to get?
I can't reach it.
We'll give it to you.
Okay. Now, do I assume the chair and ask for nominations for Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I make a motion that we would nominate Kathy Bradenfall, but she say where she's at.
In what sense?
I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations?
Moving, nomination cease.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that nominations be ceased. Kathy Bradenfall has been nominated as Vice Chair. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Kathy Bradenfall's now Vice Chair, congratulations Kathy.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we appoint Dr. Doris Givens as Secretary of the Board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Dr. Givens become, continue to be the Secretary of the Board. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Dr. Givens, welcome back. Nomination for Treasurer.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Vice President Brian Bodie for Treasurer.
Second.
Any other nominations?
Moving, nomination cease.
Nomination's closed, all in favor of Brian Bodie as Treasurer? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome back, Brian. Let's move on to item number four, naming of the bank depositories, and that's on Attachment Eight.
Which is on page six in your scroll down.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the naming of the bank depositories as stated on Attachment Eight is consistent with our past depositories.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we continue with the current bank depositories as they appear on Attachment Eight, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving back to the agenda, next item is the naming of the college newspaper, currently the Wind Out Daily News.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we select the Wind Out Echo as the official college newspaper.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Wind Out Daily News continue to be the official college newspaper.
No.
Wind Out Echo.
Oh.
Question, I have a question.
Sorry, thank you, yes.
Can we have it in both or we have to name just one?
There's only one official newspaper.
Trustee Flunder, you can have publications in two newspapers, but you name one official newspaper. Your question is, can you put your announcements in both for legal purposes? The answer is yes, but you designate one as your official publication, not so much to communicate with your constituency, but to provide notice on legal matters and other matters that are required by Kansas law and other notices for creditors and that sort of thing.
So the rest of the time, Wind Out West will get it.
Well.
Because everybody don't get the Wind Out Echo.
Well, not everybody gets.
And these are, these are for the legal notices, but the answer to your question is yes, you can publish your notices in more than one publication.
Okay.
But you name one as your official and then the Board is, at its leisure, may publish in as many as it is able to do according to its treasury.
Yeah, but the Wind Out Echo is more for attorneys.
It's actually more for legal notices and the argument is, but we don't have a daily newspaper that's for everyone. I would agree.
It's actually a published newspaper.
It's a private published newspaper.
Well, it's published.
And it's for.
Which is more than what we've had in the past and we need to look also at our costs and what is consistent with what other governing bodies are using for their legal notices. And I would submit that the Wind Out Echo is consistent with those criteria.
Okay, and the motion is the Wind Out Echo become the official college news, college newspaper. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I think it is, it does bring up an issue of do we use multiple media outlets to announce official meetings or so on? I don't know at this time, do we just, Peggy, do we just send it to one newspaper at this point?
The Wind Out Echo, don't nobody get it for them.
Right. I'm just thinking it's worth a conversation sometime, you decide today that perhaps we ought to publish in multiple papers so we're sure we cover the whole community, but just something to think about in the future.
For requests for bids for things like that, we publish in about five newspapers for things like that, the CALL, the CAH, the, well now it'll be in the Echo. We've always put it online with the Daily, so we send it to everybody. We send them to Tonga and Oxy and everywhere else they don't put them in. But for those items, now officially on, like the budget, we've only ever put it in one place.
Well, my understanding.
Where do we put the budget?
It'll go in the Echo.
In the official newspaper. Well, my understanding, the Wind Out Daily News is no longer in print, it's only online.
It's online.
Yeah, they have a digital.
Yes.
And online doesn't meet the state requirement.
Statutory requirement.
It has to be printed, it has to be a printed newspaper, online doesn't count.
So, okay, so I think we made the right decision.
Yeah.
All right, appointment of College Legal Counsel, currently McEnany Van Cleven Phillips. Motion?
I move we continue with McEnany Van Cleven Phillips as our College Legal Counsel.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that McEnany Van Cleve and Phillips continue to be our Legal Counsel, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Welcome back, Darryl.
Thank you.
Appointment of Freedom of Information Officer, currently Dean of Instructional Services, Dr. Sankey Min.
I move that we appoint Dr. Sankey Min.
Second.
You see, yeah, I was looking to see if you could see it. It's been moved and seconded that Dr. Sankey Min continue to be the Freedom of Information Officer, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, confirming the Board of Trustees meeting dates and time.
Mr. Chairman, I move that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Form of order.
Yes, sir.
I have risen. I don't do a whole lot of talking.
But when you do.
But when I talk, I speak loud and clear. On that note, since we look like we're going to go back to the change of a board meeting day, it looks like it will be on the second Tuesday of each month, I will make a motion that we get up early in the morning, have breakfast, don't forget the breakfast, 7:30 a.m., come to the college, ready to go to work after breakfast.
Okay.
Do you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Eight o'clock.
What time?
7:30 a.m.
For breakfast.
Breakfast.
And eight o'clock for the meeting.
Eight o'clock for the meeting.
Second.
Thank you.
Let me be sure I caught all that from down here.
The breakfast.
The motion is second Tuesday at eight o'clock.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, fine.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Trustees meeting be moved or continue to be on the second Tuesday of each month, but the time changed to eight a.m., all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Listen, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Wait a minute, back up here.
Yes, sir. I forgot the breakfast?
Yeah.
He gonna have you something to eat.
Okay, I.
As duly noted, breakfast will be available.
Yeah, don't worry about it, we'll take care of you, Clyde.
Peggy's nodding her head, she got it.
I'm a ruined boy.
She got it. Peggy's doing like this. As long as Peggy's on board, we're good, Clyde.
All right, moving along to item number six, approval of the minutes of the June 24th meeting.
Move approval of the minutes of June 24th.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of the June 24th meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Also approval of the minutes of the July 14th special meeting via conference call, part of that meeting was via, well, that meeting was via conference call.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of the July 14th, 2014 special meeting conference call, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, audience to patrons and petitioners, does anyone wish to speak to us today? Hearing none, we'll move forward to item number eight, any communication, Madam President?
There was one communication that didn't come directly to the Board, but I would like to share because in the church service at Oak Ridge Baptist Church on Sunday, there was a letter read that was written by Mr. Michael Kimbrough. He was positively addressing the behavior of the young man who was here last week, who ran, last board meeting, who ran one of the cameras. He wanted to come and actually see how we handled technology at a board meeting and actually, Mr. Kimbrough put him on one of the cameras at the last board meeting and he did a fantastic job and he wrote a letter to the pastor of the church and that letter was read Sunday. So I'd like to thank Michael for recognizing the young man and for extending that opportunity to him and then monitoring him and then acknowledging his service to the church. So thank you so much, Michael. So that's the only communication.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to report a communication, just basically to edify the Board. I had a message to contact another community patron with regard to the temporary closing or monitoring of the track in the soccer field. And so, the conversation was very cordial and productive and as you can imagine, the same concern was expressed that we talked about last month. So, we asked her indulgence in working with us until this month, till we could come up with an adequate solution and I'm sure we'll probably be hearing about that sometime soon. But I did have one more telephonic communication with the patron, that makes a total of two that I had on this issue. And then, of course, we heard from the gentleman last month that showed up in person.
I had ten and I invited all ten of them to come to this meeting, but I see no one shows up, showed up. But I think, I told them we were working on it and so maybe I guess that gives us a little bit of time.
All right. Moving along to item number nine, President's Report.
I'd like to share the first part of my report with Dr. Vitale. We have students here and I'd like for him to present the students.
I'd like to ask Leota Marks, Dean of the Tech Center and faculty there, to recognize our students that performed at the National Skills USA. I guess it was the last time we had a board meeting because that's where they were, competing.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, welcome students. And we also have our major appliance technology instructor with us this afternoon, Jake Carmack, who is the coordinator of the USA Skills Competition at Kansas City, Kansas Community College Technical Education Center. We're very proud that we have several of our medalists here today and these are students that have competed with students from all over the country in their particular field of study and have won top awards in those fields. And Jake is going to come and tell you a little bit about the competition. We also had a number of our students who medaled at the state level, but he told me that many of them were not able to come today because they're already working at jobs. So we're glad to hear that they're working and I'd like to have Jake to come on up to the mic and tell us a little bit more.
Excellent.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm really, really happy to be here and share what we do at the Tech Center with Skills USA, which is a national students organization. It used to be called VICA, I don't know if you're familiar with that, back when the Tech Center was a vocational school. We've had a very, very long history with VICA and then Skills USA over the last 30 years. Within the last five or six years, our, our school has taken a very active role in participating and statistically, the numbers just keep getting better and better every year. This particular year for 2014, we had 67 competitors at various competitions throughout the state. There were 16 different competitions that are, that our students participated and competed in at the state level. Of those 67, 33 students were able to obtain a medal, that's either first, second, or third place. Gold medals, we had, excuse me, 12 gold medals, 10 silver and 11 bronze at the state competitions. That qualified us for sending 12 competitors because you have to get a gold to go to Nationals. And historically, that's been done for, I think, the last 21 years here in Kansas City at Bartle Hall and they also, they use up all of Bartle Hall and Hale Arena down at the Agricultural Hall of Fame and a couple more commercial buildings downtown. The competition, the national competition has sort of outgrown Kansas City, they don't have enough hotel space. I think there's 18,000 people that come to Kansas City for that week to compete. But of those 12 gold medalists, that qualified us for seven different competitions at Nationals and out of those, we got two medals. We got one gold and one silver. We had another student in electrical technology who got fourth place and we found out there was only two points difference between first place and fourth place. And so I'm absolutely thrilled. I've been doing this since I became a teacher and I really enjoy it and I really enjoy the opportunity that it affords the students to have, bring the students in close proximity with employers because the employers in business and industry are the people who actually conduct the competitions. And the educational institutions provide the students and the facilities for the competitions. So it's really good and I'm really happy to introduce a couple of students, like my dean said, most of them have gone on to get a job, which that's what it's all about and we're happy that's working for everybody. And these two here are no exception, but they were able to gain permission from their employers to come and speak with you today, at great difficulty in one case. And I'd like to introduce them. The first one, well, I'll just introduce both of them, have them come up here with a few remarks for the Board. So the first one is Aaron Feibel, he is my student and he's now employed at Food Equipment Repair and Commercial Refrigeration Equipment Service and Repair. And then also Andre Allen, who is Nail Technology and she has, she gained a silver medal and I'll let you guys figure out who goes first.
Ladies first.
Hello.
Hello.
I just want to say that I was thankful for the opportunity to compete in the state competition and the national. I went to another school before I came here and they did not offer Skills USA. So this was my first time ever competing in something like this and it was kind of becoming a family tradition because my brother competed two years ago, he brought home gold. My sister competed, she brought home gold, so I got a chance to bring home gold too.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
All right.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Again, I'm Aaron Feibel. I was actually looking for Jake's program for about four years before I found it and then he got me involved with Skills USA. I served as the chapter secretary both fall, well, spring and fall semesters. I didn't expect a place in Nationals, I didn't think I did that well and then when I saw my name pop up as gold, it's about four steps before I hit the ground. But it's a huge honor and, you know, got to thank him for that chance.
All right. Outstanding.
Congratulations to both of you, we're glad you could be here. And Dr. Givens, I wonder if we could get a nice letter out to their employers thanking them, number one, for hiring our students and number two, for allowing them to be here, you know, to represent their entire group, I think, because it is difficult to get released from work and I think the employer would probably appreciate a nice little thank you letter for.
Absolutely. Dean Marks, can you help me with that? Thank you.
I also like to congratulate you, that's a remarkable feat and, yeah, thank you very much for being here today.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to miss the opportunity also to pay tribute to the teachers.
Absolutely.
Every time we have great success stories like we have at this college regularly, it's because of people like David and other people that are working very hard with our students. So thanks to all the teachers who are out there doing great things for our students.
Yes.
Now you can go back to work if you have to.
All right. Thank you all so much, that's awesome.
Thank you. Thanks also to the dean for making sure that we got this on the agenda, thank you. We have visitors today from the Community College Leadership Program from NAU, National American University. And the two people who are not from KCKCC are Jeanette Furno and Charles Lee. And that is a program that Ms. Marissa Gray is also in and I think they're about two-thirds of the way finished with the doctorate program. Would you all stand and be recognized, please? Thank you for coming, they are reviewing our board meeting and writing a paper on how well we did.
Oh, boy.
So it's part of their classwork assignment.
Hate yourself, Clyde.
So thank you. I have one report that is from Jim Beechwood and it's good news that we've been waiting for years to hear. So Jim, please.
Excellent.
Good afternoon and thank you. What I wanted to present before you today is a request for approval for Dr. Givens to approve the contract for services with Trizola Communications with regard to advertising and marketing services. The information should be, should have been placed within your packet and if you would answer any questions that you might have on that.
The only question I had was probably to Darryl, I noticed the laws of the state of Missouri. That's not an issue, is it, the fact that it's Missouri?
Yeah, I wondered about that.
It would be, is your DA Form 146 say the laws of the state of Missouri would be the laws of the state of Kansas and so that would be one of the modifications that we would insert there, otherwise it's ready for your action. And the reason for that, for those who are wondering, is that there's a Kansas statute that says that groups like Community College and other state entities will not agree to the jurisdiction of other states, that they'll be voidable as a matter of law. And so typically what we do is we advise the parties that even if the Board signs it, it's going to be voidable as a matter of law, so we give them notice and reference the Kansas statute. That's the answer, Trustee Daniels, that I think that you're asking about.
I'm of approval of the agreement with the amendment that reads state of Missouri, or state of Kansas rather than state of Missouri.
Second.
I do have a question on page 18, section eight of the contract has, I'll call it up, charge of 15 percent. I'm just wondering if that is a customary percentage or is it lower or higher than is customary?
The 15 percent is standard within the industry for agencies to apply to their services.
Okay, just wanted to, on the record. Thank you.
The only other thing, Mr. Chairman, is on page 19, we typically insert at the top of that page to the extent permitted by law.
All am in my motion to include that statement.
And again, there's a Kansas statute that says that community colleges will not indemnify or hold harmless and then the assertion is to the extent permitted by law that the college would agree to fulfill those obligations.
So my motion still stands with the amendment. Two amendments now.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept the Trizolo contract or agreement with the amendments, all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Good work, Jim. Thank you.
There's one more thing. I'd like to give an update on the track. It should be completed before the next board meeting. We put in a key, a card system. That's what we're installing, so that people who use the track will swipe a card, and they will have access to the turnstile to get in to use the track. That is information that we can use for windout, healthy communities, windout, we can use it for that. And additionally, we'll just have that data to share for whatever purposes we need data about wellness in our community. We will make it convenient for people who use the track early in the morning. The police office will be open at six o'clock so that they can come in, fill out the paperwork, get their picture taken, and get their cards all at the same time. I think the first card, I can't, haven't decided what we're going to charge for the first one or charge for the second one if it's lost. But we're working out the details. We'll have a list of do's and don'ts, requirements to use the track, what's acceptable, what's not, and they will sign that and get their card, and they can go walking. So we'll make that available to any of the patrons in the community, and any students at the college, any faculty, staff who wish, board members who wish to use the track. But we will now have a record of who's using the track and the times that they're using it. It will also help with our safety stats and the information that we have to gather now for so many purposes in reporting. That concludes my report.
Well, one question about the, did we choose to have any security there during any time of day?
The security regularly supports that area or tracks that area. We did not decide to have a person stationed there. If anything happens during a certain time, we will know who was on the track at that time, and we'll know who to look for.
So that, so the, in the swiping of the card, it also times that person in?
Yes.
But there's nothing timing them out, just in, right?
Does it time them out or just in?
Not that I know of, ma'am, no.
We did it for just coming in?
Well, okay.
Or so that you could have the time that they would, that they used last the field?
That's what I wanted to hear.
Gosh, we should have talked to you first. We didn't think of that.
Well, no, I just, you know, I was thinking if something did happen, you'd, yeah.
The turnstile would be locked, so you'd have to swipe to get in. I would presume you'd have to swipe to get out, because the turnstile locks?
No, they can't set it, they can't set it locked on the way out for safety reasons, just like our doors here. Ted's is smart enough to set it, when you push from the backside, it'll open. From the outside, it won't.
Okay. All right, entertain the motion to accept the president's report.
Second.
Moved in second, and we accept the president's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Vice President for Academic Affairs.
You have my report. Be willing to answer any questions, if any of you have any.
I have given questions in advance, so if you just go ahead and just kind of go through them. Go through them.
All right. One of the questions Trustee Rios had was regarding some of the information from Tony Tompkins. And Tony shared with me that in the Title IX webinar, he came to realize that Title IX was much more than just gender equity in athletics, that it, you know, it's a much broader sweeping law, and it, he said, it's also interesting how the trend has changed now to really protect the victims, and how important it is to be proactive about gathering information before taking any action. So he did share that with me as well. And with regard to the baseball camp, they were funded by an outside donation. That donor was Greg Best, who has received a letter of thank you from the baseball coach. And they had about forty-five participants each week in the camp. And the El Padreino Soccer League is a fundraiser for the soccer team.
Okay. Do we know how much we raised?
No, he didn't tell me about that. I didn't get the amount.
Okay. And then my question in regards to letters of appreciation, I think they're important, but I think that the administration, or maybe even the letter that's signed by the Board of Trustees, is significant, that the donors, the community be aware that we are cognizant of the partnerships that we have with various sponsorships, donations, and so forth. And so I would encourage that it be a practice. Certainly, you know, a coach or someone can kind of do the authoring, but if we can have some sort of signature noted, either from the chair of the board, or just also adding the Board of Trustees and administration, I think that would, that's something to be considered in the future as we try to establish, start working with the foundation and our outreach to, you know, furthering our community endeavors. Just an idea to present.
Okay, and I believe the next question had to do with the Student Advising Center. The question was if we set a quota for the number of students or visits that the advisors are to have on a monthly basis. And we don't set quotas for them. You know, we're not out there trying to make them hit a number in any particular way, but that number simply represents, it's an indication of the activity in that office. And what we'll see as we get closer to the start of a semester, that number will probably rise. When we get further away from, when we're further away from the start of a semester, typically will be lower. As we move to mandatory advising for those students who have fewer than thirty total hours, we'll be able to predict a number that we might see, because those students will be essentially blocked from registering prior to seeing an advisor. So we'll have numbers that we would expect to see, but we're not going to, we wouldn't call them a quota in the sense that we think of quotas in other lines of work. So that's with the Student Advising Center. And then we are working on the cost analysis for Leavenworth. Dr. Min is pulling data on the number of students that actually attend Leavenworth, the Leavenworth Center, rather than just reflect the number of students we have at KCKCC that are from Leavenworth County. Because those, that number could be students that are one of our tech centers, it could be students here, or it could be students there. So we're going to look specifically at the Leavenworth Center and do a basic cost analysis at that point. And then with respect to the library's circulation policies and procedures, those are internal policies and procedures. Probably that phrase, policies and procedures, is somewhat misleading. It's always confusing when, and you'll see this a lot in reaccreditations, they'll talk about policies, but they'll use the term very broadly, not necessarily always referring to board-approved, board-designated policies. So really, those are really just operational guidelines, would be maybe a little more accurate as opposed to policies and procedures. And I think that covers all of them.
That's right. Thank you.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, there's one more note. Oh, this was actually from Dr. Daniels, though. The, and I did answer him. He asked about the number of mailings that we did for the tech center in Dean Leota Mark's report, and those were multiple mailings. We mailed out about eighteen thousand different mailings to households between, with incomes between ten thousand and fifty thousand. And the number of households that they reported was what the Yellow Page Direct Mailing Program indicated to them that were in Leavenworth and Wyandotte Counties.
I'll give you, with the, oh, Trustee Rios was, okay, when the, when any of the monies that come in for the sports program, all of them have to go through the endowment? And it is used on that sport that brings it in, correct?
Yes. Yes, that's part of their fundraiser.
So it's kept separate in the endowment office? Which, what have us?
Well, I don't know if they keep it in the endowment, or if it's in one of our funds, but it's one of our funds.
Which one is it?
But if soccer brings in money, it doesn't go to subsidized basketball or?
It goes back to soccer.
It goes to soccer. Yes, ma'am. And just one other thing that I learned just prior to the board meeting is Clifford Smith, who we're kind of surprised is here in a shirt and tie, and Rich Piper, were out at the county fairgrounds, setting up a trailer and getting ready for some recruiting activities for the, on behalf of the tech for this coming week of the county fair. I know they did that during the Boy Scout jamboree out at the Speedway earlier this year, and they had a lot of students. It was very, very successful. The faculty that participated really enjoyed it, and they were eager to do it again. And this is giving those students the opportunity to see the type of work that Jake and those students are doing at the tech center to get that word out. So I think that's to be commended on their behalf for taking that time. And, you know, even though Cliff isn't really officially directly involved with academics, having his background in academics and his attitude of getting things done, you see that he still keeps his hand in it, and so I'm proud of that, even though, you know, he technically works for Brian, he really is a true KCKCC employee in that respect. So thank you, Cliff.
Michael, I had a question on, you know, under the student accommodations at the tech On page twenty-four, that seventy-five thousand five four four, is that like structural?
No, that is, that is to provide interpreters for students that we have at the tech center. When a student is on this campus in a more traditional course, they may be here for two classes on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and two classes on Tuesday, Thursday. So we only need an interpreter when they're in class. While they're at the tech, because they're doing those things from basically seven-thirty to approximately two-thirty, five days a week, they need an interpreter there with them the whole time. Because if the instructor has to give them directions, they have to have somebody there to interpret. And that's why you see that that number is so much higher at the tech center than it is here on this campus.
So it is just for?
It is just for those, yes. You know, we have, you know, right now, we've had three students there, and they've required that sign language interpreter services.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions for Vice President Vitale? Move we accept Dr. Vitale's report?
Second.
Been moved in second to accept Dr. Vitale's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next agenda item. Vice President Bodie.
I do ask for your approval of to publish the 2014-15 budget, which is in attachment B. However, I do ask for an amendment to that. It says three-thirty. I had prepared some extra time in here. I do have one that says eight AM. And so the official published one will be, will meet on August 12, 2014, at eight AM.
Move approval with the amendment.
Second.
It's moved in second to approve the publishing of the budget with the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Any more questions of Vice President Bodie on his report? Hearing none, accept a motion to accept his report.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second to accept Vice President Bodie's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next agenda item.
I ask for your approval of payment of the bills from, that are listed from page forty-two to one-eighteen.
Bills have been reviewed by Finance Committee. Move to pay the bills.
Second.
Moved in second to pay the bills. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. We'll pay the bills.
I ask for your approval on the financial reports from page one-nineteen to one-twenty-two.
Move approval.
Second. Moved in second to approve the financial report. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Motion carries. Next agenda item.
I ask for your approval of the recommendations on twelve, C, one through five.
Move approval.
Second.
Been moved in second to approve the recommendations as listed, one through five. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry.
Thank you very much.
Next agenda item thirteen, a motion to go into executive session.
Thirty-five minutes.
Thirty-five minutes. Okay. Move approval. We enter into executive session to discuss non-elected personnel matters, protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed. And for the consultation with legal counsel on a matter protected by the attorney-client privilege for a time period up to forty-five minutes. Okay. Y'all heard the motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And Mr. Chairman, for the beginning of this meeting, it'll be just Dr. Givens and myself, and then others on standby.
Thank you.
Stand.
Hi, Cheryl.
Good afternoon. How are you?
Good afternoon.
Very long, Cheryl.
I'd like to present the July 2014 Personnel Report. That first section, section A, from one through six are items for your information. And before I request your approval for the other items, I have a correction.
Good, because I do, too. What is it? Number two?
No, it's.
Yes, he's baseball coach.
Yes, the baseball.
Coach Stambursky?
No, I'm sorry. Actually, this stuff is too small for me. Sorry, sorry, sorry. It's young ladies, her salary is wrong.
While Cheryl's looking for that one, I'd also like to note in item number two, resignation of Damian Stambursky, assistant baseball coach.
Yes.
And congratulations to him for getting a head coach's job.
Where'd he go?
Hate to lose him, but. Central Missouri, where'd he go, Brian?
Assistant coach at Central Missouri.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry, I'm going to move, but the one I was looking for, I don't see it. And I feel really crazy here. But there's a second item. Last month, I asked you to put on hold, there was two applicants that we were trying to hire for resident assistant. And I asked for them to be put on hold because I hadn't received the background checks yet. And we have received the background checks, and we'd like to add them to the, if we could bring them back to the agenda and be put on this portion of the agenda for approval.
Okay. Move approval of the HR recommendations as amended to include the two holds and then the correction as pointed out by Trustee Ash.
Second. Been moved in second to accept the report of items one through six. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, with the amendment?
I just have a question with Cheryl about that.
Yes.
Do we have to have the names of those two people in here somewhere? I don't, I'm really getting something about it, but I don't know.
I can tell you what they are.
Yeah, please.
The Sean Burkey, B-U-R-K-I, is one, and the other one is Patrick Halt-Wanger, H-A-L-T-W-A-N-G-E-R.
And their salaries?
Four hundred dollars a month stipend.
Thank you. Ask, does that be included in the motion?
So, yes.
Yes.
Peggy's record reflect that?
Okay.
All right, you've heard the motion and the amendments. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Thank you. We just did one through six. Oh, I think we did the whole thing. Okay. Okay. All right, move on to committee reports.
The chair, uh, how are you going to make committee assignments? You have to, you have to assign us, Mr. Chair.
You think you'll have them ready?
No, I don't have...
Bring it back in August.
You'll probably just communicate with us and then bring that back in August, right, Mr. Chair? Thank you very much, yeah. We'll, we'll have them prepared for our August meeting. Meanwhile, are there any committee reports?
I will update from KACC. I forwarded minutes from the June meeting to you just yesterday. I just received them yesterday, so I forwarded them to you for your review. But you may note in there that we did not approve the lobbying contract.
Right.
Because we were in negotiations with Devine and Doddley. So we did settle on negotiations for what level of service and what specific services they will provide for us. And so, um, that was, that was approved, um, by, uh, sort of an email census and vote approving it. So, and then I would also like to report that, uh, Dr. Givens and the vice presidents and the deans and I hosted Regent Kenny Wilk here on the campus last week. Uh, we had a very, uh, good, engaging dialogue, uh, with our deans, uh, lively participation, good exchange, uh, in which he was, uh, welcoming of. And then he got a, a tour of the TEC, or a significant portion of it anyway. And, uh, he was blown away by that. Uh, most of you, if you don't remember, he is the incoming chair this year for the Board of Regents. So, uh, we have now hosted Regent Murgia and Regent Wilk. Uh, and, and, uh, they're both representatives on the Board of Regents from our service area, one from Wyandotte County, one from Leavenworth County. So it was, I felt it was very productive. And I'd just like to thank everybody that I mentioned there, Dr. Givens and the vice presidents and all of the deans, uh, because I, that was time well spent. That, that was an investment. Uh, and I, and I think will, will, uh, come to fruition for us someday.
All right, Chair, uh, by, uh... Don. Don. Thank you for that. All right, um, item number sixteen, unfinished business. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved second, we adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. [music][1782.65]